Welcome to the April 26, 2023 City Council Meeting. We will begin with the invocation from Councilmember McKeller, followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
Please pray with me. God of our silent years, God of our silent tears, we ask that you come with us this morning, and thank you, Father, for the great blessings that you continue to shower down from up above. Father, we thank you for our council, thank you for our mayor, thank you for our city employees, thank you for all of those that work in fatigably hard to make this city the greatest city ever. And, Father, now I'm reminded of the great civil rights leader, Harry Belafonte, late and great civil rights leader, who said, "Silver rights is for every person: the black man, the white man, the red and the brown man." And, Father, we ask that you help us to legislate laws that will look at that and make sure that we do things the greater good of all mankind. And, Father, as we get ready to start our meeting, pray that we will do things decently and in order. These are the blessings we ask in darling son, Jesus Christ's name, and let everyone say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the minutes from March 22, 2023.
Move to approve the minutes as presented. Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to come down there for some awards. All right, we have some service awards this morning. Beverly Vonat, senior PS telecommunications, 25 years of service. And next we have Jean Lewis, commercial sales, 25 years of service. All right, next we have Matt Smizer, police lieutenant, 20 years of service. And the last one we have is Wayne Thomas, police officer, 30 years of service. Before y'all leave, just real quick, I mean, these four people represent 100 years of service, which means a lot. And it makes a lot for our young people to some kind of background jobs, and to watch us older people to kind of stick with something, y'all stuck with it. So, thank you for your long service to the city, and we appreciate you.
Wayne doesn't go enough to be here 30 years. I know.
All right, on to zoning, Z1, Kyle.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning, Kyle.
The first item we have today is our biannual Unified Development Code, UDC review, and so we do have some proposed amendments to the UDC, which first and foremost exclude the adoption of the Master Street Plan, the 2021 Master Street Plan. That was, so this comes out of the Tyler First, the comprehensive plans, goals for transportation and circulation within Tyler, which recommends policies to improve travel with new roads and preservation of rights of way for transportation corridors. And so, we do that through the Master Street Plan, which is put together by the Tyler Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO. They prepare that study and that report, and since 1985, the city has adopted versions of that map. And so, what the Master Street Plan is, is a long-term or long-range transportation plan, again, to serve as a guide for future street development within Tyler and the five-mile ETJ extraterritorial jurisdiction, which is just outside the city limits within the county. The plan helps ensure that basic infrastructure needs are, you know, rights of way for streets are available when traffic demand and development warrants that the improvements of those facilities. And like I said, we've, the city has adopted Master Street Plans, 1985, 2005, 2012, and then the MPO adopted this version back in 2021. And the one thing to note is this is not an engineered study of these proposed routes on the Master Street Plan map. These are looking at areas where larger streets might be needed to accommodate future growth. And so, with the Master Street Plan, like I said, there's different types of streets that are, that have a hierarchy of streets. So, those are your major arterial streets, like the Loop and South Broadway, down to your minor arterial roads, like Rice Road, and then also collector streets that neighborhoods and subdivisions will feed into to connect those streets. And so, there's different types of street classifications, and the map, as you see here, does show where those are recommended to be. And then there's also context, different street contexts. So, since we, our jurisdiction also includes parts of the county within the five-mile ETJ that the Master Street Plan does have urban street standards, suburban street standards, and rural street standards as well. But that varies essentially the type of construction that you see. I do have, let me, so this is what it's referred to, that there's different street standards for more in an urban area, you'd have larger sidewalks and bike lanes. As you get to more rural areas, you know, there's not so much that pedestrian element, but more of a traffic or a street element to it. And so, these are the cross-sections that the Master Street Plan has. The city staff has reviewed these and made some modifications to the, these cross-sections. Generally, there was, there's a buffer on the ends of these cross-sections that were removed and put back into the road, but generally, that's what they would look like. I'll go back to the map here. So, what the city, so like I mentioned, the metropolitan, or the MPO did adopt the Master Street Plan back in 2021. The city today has not done that, but we did put together a review group to look at the proposed street alignments and review those for additional, if there's any concerns about existing constraints in those proposed corridors or those areas, and the other feasibility factors. And so, that group did recommend some modifications to the map. They were listed in your packets. If you have any questions, let me know. But essentially, the city is proposing to adopt the Master Street Plan with amendments, with those modifications to some of those streets. Some of those range from reclassifying streets that were shown to be arterial streets, but they may function more like a collector street in practice, and then some alignment changes, things like that. If you'd like me to go into some of those details, I can. But like I mentioned, the review group does recommend adopting the Master Street Plan with the map, with those revisions, as well as the, all this was presented to the Developers' Roundtable and the Unified Development Code Review Committee, and they all recommended approval of this proposed Master Street Plan as well. I do have more. I can keep going.
Well, everybody else might have some other questions. My main question would be, because this was controversial, was the Walsham Road extension. Can you go to that and show which part of that's on the Master Street Plan and what part of that's been excluded?
So, the Walsham Road extension previously was shown to go straight through, in a straight line, down to, or intersect with Crooked Trail, and go to Cumberland Road that way. The recommendation now is to revise that and have that street swing back to the west through that, what will eventually be kind of a higher-density, single-family area that is zoned for R1B, which is single-family attached, like townhome development. So, that's why that street would swing through there to the west, intersect with Cumberland Road, west of the condos there on Cumberland Road.
And the parts that's between the apartment complex and the townhomes has been excluded from the Master Street Plan?
It's been excluded on this, with this recommendation. As we continue to study the South Broadway corridor, that area, that may come back for another, you know, discussion, but at this time, that is being removed.
Okay. Do y'all have questions for Kyle on any of these others? That was it. Okay. Any questions for Kyle? None?
Move to approve, Z1.
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
Okay. This next request is a zone change from planned multifamily district to POD, Planned Office District. This is on Pine Crest Drive. This is located near the South, Tanglewood Shopping Center on the southeast loop there. The adjacent properties to the northern west are zoned and developed with commercial uses, and then to the south and east are single-family homes. There are some townhomes directly to the east where this would, where this development would come on to, or empty on to Pine Crest Drive. The applicant is requesting the change to develop the property with offices, general offices. They do have a site plan that they prepared that limits it to general office, not medical office, which is generally less, lower, less traffic-indusive. The Future Land Use Guide identifies this property as townhome, garden, apartment. This request would amend the Future Land Use Guide to office, provide a transition from that commercial to that residential to the southeast. Previously, the site was, there is a site plan for townhome development that has not come to fruition, and so the property was sold to the current applicant, and they are, they do plan to develop it with, again, this office development, as you see here. Four structures, four office buildings, as you see on the map, on the site plan here. The tallest structure would be 28 feet in height, and this property would be lower in elevation than the homes on the southeast. And the applicant's also proposing a buffer yard, a retaining wall around the south and the east side of the property. Where adjacent to the single-family homes on the east side, the buffer yard exceeds the minimum requirements, where they'd be required to have one tree every 35 feet, they have two trees every 35 linear feet, again, trying to mitigate the impact on the neighboring homes to the east, and then to the south as well. The, we did receive notices in opposition to this request. They do exceed 20, the calculation does exceed 20%, which would require a three-quarter majority of city council to approve this request. I would note that the property to the north, which has about 18% of that opposition, was only concerned about the potential for cross-access. They were concerned that this development would potentially have cars coming onto their property that they wouldn't, or they hadn't authorized. And so, as you can see on the site plan, that's not the case. There's no cross-access between the two properties.
Where is the access come from?
It would come off of Pine Crest Drive, just south of the Planet Fitness driveway. There's probably one just beside there, on the map here. Yeah, there's Planet Fitness on the north side there. And so, they haven't, so it seems like that concern was addressed by the applicant, but the neighbor has not retracted their opposition, so that's why it's still over 20%. The Plan of Commission recommended approval unanimously, and, you know, any questions?
Any questions for Kyle? We do have one card. Before I go to the card, any questions? Brad Donnelly. Come on up. If you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Brad Donnelly, 212 Old Carney Boulevard. And our, we have lot 18, which I guess is still not registered as a protest on this. And so, the history on this property, this is actually a site of an old lake.
Mm-hmm.
So, when the single-family homes that went in, mysterious things suddenly started happening to our property with drainage, not at the low point of the property, in the middle of the property. So, my concern is, I've been failed once on this when work was done at this site, and so I fully assume that this will be approved, because the assembly line is operating, assumption that everyone's going to do their job right. So, my question is, if I have a failure again, do I send my bill to the city? Because I incurred $7,000 of work the last time over a drainage issue. So, that's my question. How, who do I need, who do I need to be? I've been way to the side with the engineer, and I think he's addressing this. At the same time, this is a site with its own special circumstances. I have three sump pumps that I did not have to have until a lot of site work was done.
So, let me ask Kyle, what's the process for the applicant to go get all their permitting and go through the drainage issue?
Right. So, this, today, we're looking at the site plan. The applicant has met with our engineering staff, and they understand what's required. Before they are issued a building permit, they will have to have a civil engineer look at the property and demonstrate that there is no increase in runoff from the development, that they may have to retain some of the runoff on-site, or it wouldn't be runoff, but retain the drainage on-site to accomplish that. But essentially, for the building permit to be issued for the development, they'd have to have a civil engineer prove that up, and we have engineers on staff that would review that.
So, the applicant's, would it be a third-party engineer or a city engineer?
Third-party, yeah.
Okay.
Well, it'd be the applicant's engineer that prepares that drainage plan, and then our staff, city staff, would review that.
And it's stamped?
Right, right.
So, what's the answer to his question?
It's, that's just a civil matter that he's referring to.
Kyle, during PNC, the applicant mentioned something about a retention pond. Is that still in consideration?
It's still a possibility, perhaps. Yeah, they do have it on their site plan on the northwest side. If that, if that needs to be larger, that would affect the plan, and at that point, if they had to modify the site plan, if it's a major change, it would come back to the council for another review. If it's a minor change, that could be approved administratively, but they would still have to work through that, make sure that they can, they can meet those requirements for drainage.
Any other questions for Mr. Donnelly? You got any more, any other comments?
That's all you've got right now.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I also remember when that was a lake, there were water moccasins everywhere. I'm sure they're gone by now. Any other questions for Kyle before we, what's the will of the council?
Move to approve, Z2. Second.
Motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z3.
This is a request for a zone change from R1A, single-family, to RPO, Restricted Professional Office District, to allow for the development of a medical office on New Copeland Road. Yeah, this is on New Copeland, just north of Grande Boulevard. This request would allow for, again, medical offices. The adjacent properties to the north and east, or north and west are developed with single-family homes. To the east are, is also being developed with single-family homes, but there is office development to the northeast as well. And then to the, to the south is currently zoned for office development, but is currently undeveloped. The, this request would amend the Future Land Use Guide to reflect office. As you can see, the current zone, or the current office developments are not showing as office, but generally, it is a continuation of the current office development that you see along New Copeland Road. This, this request, again, would allow for the office development. We did receive notices in favor of the request, four notices in favor of the request. They did stipulate a concern about having the development have limited, limit the access to New Copeland Road and not have any driveways off of the Chadwick Place or Delores Street. They, so the applicant did indicate at the Plan of Commission meeting that they would try to restrict access just to New Copeland Road, but they were not able to commit whether they would restrict anything to the others, from the other streets. And so, from a staff perspective or a review, a city review perspective, that the, there would not be an issue with having access to New Copeland Road or only having access to New Copeland Road. So, that's why staff can say, even with the concern that there's, the applicant could address that situation and only have access to New Copeland. I will mention that the property to the south, which is zoned RPO, does not have that restriction, any restrictions on it for access, and so they also have frontage on Delores Street, so if that gets developed, there may, there may be a driveway at that location. The Plan of Commission by a three-to-two vote recommended approval of the zone change from R1A to RPO.
Any questions for Kyle?
No, just to clarify, Kyle, so the city is not going to inhibit them from using Copeland, New Copeland as their...
Right, yeah, that's correct. The, I'll just mention that the, this, the RPO zoning cannot restrict or have any stipulations placed on it for approval, such as limiting access. If it were to be, if that was the will of the council to have a stipulation like that, the property would have to be rezoned POD for Planned Office District and accomplish that.
I would think you'd want, and I would think you'd want your entry off Copeland anywhere in there.
So, I don't see any red on this map?
Right.
No.
The, we didn't receive any letters in opposition. We received them in favor with a contingency on that, so, so that could be construed to be, you know, they're, they're not in favor of it unless, unless there's a stipulation placed on that, but we didn't receive anything against the request.
Do you have any cards?
No cards on this item, so...
A move to approve, Z3. Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z4.
This next item is a zone change from C1 to C2 on the west loop. This is to allow for a Harley-Davidson motorcycle dealership. This is, again, on the west loop, just north of Robertson Road. The surrounding properties are generally developed with commercial uses and zoned a variety of industrial, commercial, and planned commercial. Essentially, all the surrounding properties, or the surrounding properties to the north and south could develop a motorcycle dealership where this property has its current zoned, could not do that. This request is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide, identifying as mixed-use center. The notices that were sent out, number returned in favor or in opposition, and the Plan of Commission by a unanimous vote recommended approval.
So, did you say this is for Harley-Davidson dealership?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by McGee, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. More movement on the west loop. Love it. Cameron.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Cameron Williams, traffic engineer for the city of Tyler. So, I'm here to give you a presentation on our year three of our intelligent transportation system master plan, or better known as our traffic signal modernization, which will maybe be a little easier. This is just a presentation, no action item, but we do have four items on the consent agenda that are associated with this as far as equipment purchase upgrades, so just wanted to make you aware of that. But as an overview, our year three plan includes these different items. So, you've got signal retiming, which was approved last council meeting, cabinet upgrades, battery backups, controller upgrades, vehicle, emergency vehicle preemption, vehicle detection, and some electrical meter supplies. So, I'll kind of run through these very quickly, just to give you an overview, but if there was a theme, I would say it's increased public safety. The investments that we've made with our traffic signal system in the past few years are, or now are allowing us to assist those first responders and the traffic safety at our intersections and being able to provide better services. So, with that, just very briefly, we've had our year one and year two signal retiming. We've seen great benefits from those, and so we will continue to build upon that. You saw at last meeting the approval of retiming of 18 intersections on the west loop called Jacksonville. So, we just want to continue to improve traffic flow, reduce delays, improve that travel time reliability. And so, and you can see in this map, the ones in red are the things that we've retimed in the past since 2019, and then the green is this year three, and you can start seeing how all that ties together and creating a system that works together as far as our coordination of our traffic signals. Cabinet and battery backup upgrades. So this includes replacing our traffic signal cabinets, and this is throughout our 10 years. We've got much older systems out there. Some of those probably been there 30 or 40 years potentially. And you think of these things, they're running 24/7, 365 days a year. And so trying to improve that technology, improve the reliability of how those things are working. But a big component that I think is the game changer for us is the 23 battery backups. As we add these cabinets and start rolling out battery backups, that's a public safety enhancement. Back in February, during the ice storm, we had 35 intersections lose power. So that's, that intersection going dark, which is then a safety concern for our drivers that don't know that that intersection's there. Then you're having to send out public safety officers or PD to control traffic in the middle of that intersection. And then our staff is out there deploying generators or stop signs, filling up with gas. It's a tying of resources and safety. And so, until we actually installed our communications last year, we probably didn't know how many power outages we were having all the time. And so this is a big step in that direction, and will help with that public safety aspect. Traffic signal controller upgrades. We did a big lift last year. We'll do plan another 52. The big component here is this will get every intersection in our city using the same controller, which helps it basically speak in the same language. It talks well with our central system, eases how many different controllers that the technicians have to work on. So I think you have to speak kind of different languages. Now they'll all be on the same platform. So this will be great for uniformity and help with that improved traffic flow and ease on being able to better maintain the system. Emergency vehicle preemption. So this is something that has been around for a long time, but here in the city of Tyler, we have never had it. So basically what it is, is it overrides those signal timing and can give a green indication to the fire vehicles as they're approaching that intersection, and it stops the other program. We've been running a pilot program on out of station number two since November, December, and it's been very successful. And just, if you'll let me, I'll read a couple of responses that we got from some of the firemen at station number two. It says, "I noticed a difference immediately. It made maneuvering through South Broadway traffic a lot easier, and we don't pop curves like we used to because of the preemption device getting traffic to move, flow, move, flow with us. In my opinion, it's been extremely beneficial for our response times and most importantly, our safety." And then their only con was that the latter two didn't have it at that station, which we have already fixed that piece of it and added that device. Another one said, "I think this device works great. No negatives in my eyes. It improves not only response times, but it increases safety for the citizens and us responding to an emergency." And then a third one, just real quick, "The preemption device has been a huge benefit to Engine Two. Not only is emergency response time decreased, but the device also increases the safety of both Tyler Fire Department personnel and citizens on the roadway. Furthermore, an additional benefit to the device is the potential for reduced maintenance costs associated with apparatus driving over curves while crossing medians and routes to emergency calls." And those are directly from our firemen at station number two. And the point that I want to make sure you hear, the investment in our traffic signal system is helping our emergency responders, our fire, police, provide safety, get to places quicker, and reduce maintenance on those equipments. So we'll be rolling that out because we've already made that investment in our communication system citywide. So we'll be purchasing, so that 18 vehicles with the fire department will have that, and then we'll be able to program that out throughout the city to give them those response times and safety improvements.
So that equipment's actually installed in the vehicle?
So it's two, two different components. We have to have a communication device in the cabinets, which the majority of our intersections do, and I think within the next year and a half, I think we have about 14 intersections that we still need to roll that out, but it's through some highway safety improvement programs that we have through TechStop. But then we add a device on the fire engine that helps communicate with that cabinet and make those changes.
Okay. So it's like, not like a garage store opener that could be shared with other people?
So, no, it is not. It is not.
Like the mayor.
But just to clarify, we do have one, one mobile unit that we will have that will take care of the test. Because if something's not working, we want to be out there and make it run through the system and make it operate. But it'll be only used for those purposes. But it only, it basically is tied to the white strobe on the fire engine, so once they start running hot with that white strobe, it activates that system and starts looking down the road and starts turning intersections, multiple intersections ahead of them. This is not the most exciting piece, but there are different antennas, cable harnesses, some upgrades to some of our video detection services, the, so that we can make these things work together. So again, just part of the little details to make everything operate correctly and efficiently. Detection of systems. So this is another big, heavy lift. We've got a lot of systems that are probably 20 years older or more out there, black and white cameras that are used to detect vehicles. The technology has significantly increased. The vendor actually has end-of-life some of this equipment. So again, you can't even get some of the parts to replace that, so that's what we need to continue to invest and improve this. And this is one of those things that really probably affects drivers the most, is if detection's not working, then you may have to serve the side street when nobody's there. And that's one of the most frustrating things, and why am I waiting when there's, when there's traffic? And so this is a big piece of that. Also with this newer systems, it gives us the ability to view that video remotely. So that's something we can share with fire and police. You know, maybe you have an accident intersection and you want to see what's happening at that time, so it gives you some eyes in the field without actually having to be there. So again, some public safety benefit. And one question we do get, just so nobody asks, but we do not record this. So that is not a component. It's just for live viewing when we need it on demand. Also, we will be upgrading four electrical meter pedestals as part of these cabinet replacements, just to improve the safety, the disconnects, so that when the signal technicians are working at that intersection, they can power them down appropriately and be safe when they're working. And then lastly to close, I just want to put up a picture. You see me up here talking about our traffic signal system, but this is our traffic operations team. They're the guys that are in the field doing the work. So from left to right, you have Cody Baker, Jason Candy, Car Sigalow, David Long, Bob McCombs, Jesse Clements, and Roger McMichael. So these are the guys that last Thursday at 2:00 and 1:00 in the morning, when the signal cabinet at Broadway chimney box is hit, they're responding. They're getting that thing working so that when you're driving work in the morning, it's not a red flash. Or during those ice storms, they're out there deploying the generators, putting stop signs out, making sure things work and working with fire and police to make that happen. So these are the guys who are actually making this work in a very important, so going back to the very beginning when we talked about our ITS master plan, we can have a great plan, we can have the funding, but if we don't have the staff to implement it, it's not going to be very successful. So they do a great job. I want to make sure you saw those and give them the recognition and continue to support them. And that's the end of the presentation. So any questions you may have on this year three program?
Well, I'll make one comment before I answer questions. What I understand now on Broadway, that the reduction in wait time has gone from 30% to 32%, and the wait time on Fourth and Fifth Street's gone to, from 25, from, from a wait time's been reduced by 25 to 28%, which shows, which shows this is working.
We're seeing improvements. Absolutely.
Just want everybody to realize that. Nobody in particular in the audience. Any questions for Cameron?
Thank you, Cameron.
Yes, looking forward to getting it all done.
All right. R1.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning, Michael.
The next item that we have is a proposed resolution that is a part of the downtown Tyler traffic study. This is a study that has been commissioned by the Tyler area Metropolitan Planning Organization, the NPO, and it is the culmination of a lot of work that has been going on in the downtown area for quite some time. Just a brief history lesson of, of the area. Downtown Tyler was the heart of the city whenever it was first founded, from, from the 1800s to the early 1900s. And it was in approximately the 1960s, there was the construction of Broadway Square Mall. There was completion of the loop. There were other things that started to drive development further down south. And really in the 70s, most of the main retail anchors had left downtown Tyler, and the majority of the remaining anchors were really the government offices and the historic churches that were out there. But it was in the 2000s that really started to become a desire for the community to see a revitalization of downtown. And the, some of the things that have been done is Smith County has been doing their own studies. So since 2000, Smith County has done four different studies, looking at the courthouse as far as what can be done, as far as doing reconstruction and looking at their other facilities, and what can be done to try and improve those areas. And there have also been traffic studies that have been done that have been a part of those studies. The city of Tyler has also done a lot of work for downtown planning through the Tyler 21, Tyler 1st, and most recently, there was a downtown streetscape plan that was conducted by the city of Tyler that really was looking at what can be those improvements, try to make downtown a destination rather than just a cut-through area. And it's not just been the government agencies. There's been a lot of redevelopment that has been going on through the past few years that we have seen. So I've just put a few up on the screen just for highlights of the developments that have happened in, in the recent past, and also some of the projects such as the Wilcox, the Lindsay, and the Carlton Hotel that are all upcoming. So it was looking at all of these different developments that the NPO saw the opportunity to try to come through, take up the baton, take the next step in, in the planning process, and look at not just the downtown square, not just look at Broadway, but look at the entire downtown planning area boundary, which is looking at Palace to Beckham, and then going from Gentry down to Front Streets. So really having that holistic view of downtown and seeing what are the improvements that could be nuanting right now, but also looking at the redevelopment potential and the different traffic changes that are coming up, and how could we proactively be planning for accommodating that traffic when it occurs? So in order to do that, the NPO put out a request of applications to Tyler Council to do the study, and there was Kinley Horn and Associates was the development firm that was brought on board to do the, this, this study for us. And we have two representatives from the Kinley Horn team, who are in right here. And we'll go ahead and turn the presentation over to Ron Fernando, who's our project manager. He'll take the next step.
Thank you, Michael. Mayor and Council, I'm very excited to be here today to talk to you about this project. Again, like Michael said, I'm here on Fernando with Kinley Horn, joined by Abby Abson, my partner. She'll be talking second half of this presentation. So as Michael alluded to, this has been something we've been talking about for a long time in Tyler. And we're really excited to be here to talk to you about two of the alternatives that we want to share with you and give additional information about that. And then, of course, answer any questions that you might have, because this is certainly a big change for the downtown environment. So going in, so let me, let me back up real quick. So what, some of the things that we've been doing behind the scenes is, last December, December 2022, we did traffic counts all throughout downtown to find out what the traffic volumes are. And then throughout the entire, you know, five months of this year, we've been having workshops and discussing with staff about iterations and different tweaks that could be made to improve. And so we've come up with these two alternatives, and that's what we're going to share to you today. So what I'll say in terms of objectives of this study, it's really easy to talk about Broadway Avenue because it's kind of the flashy area of downtown, and that's the really exciting portion of this project. But really, we're looking at this, as Michael said, holistically, and looking at that blue perimeter on that, on the screen that you see, that's the main area that we're looking at. And we've even looked further out at Fourth Street, Fifth Street, up to the loop. So we've looked at a really large area. So objectives of this study, evaluation of the nine existing signals that's currently on flash, that's west of Broadway, we looked at those. We looked at intersection control methods, right? So should they remain signalized, or should they go into stop control intersections? We looked at the one-way grid that you have. We've heard that that one-way grid can be confusing for people coming from out of town, and so looking at whether that should be changed to two-way. Traffic rerouting, this is something really important. As we think about bringing in the curves along Broadway, they're, the vehicles that use Broadway as a cut-through for regional trips, those trips are going to be taking different routes, whether it's Gentry, Palace, Beckham. So what are some of the percentages that we came up with and how are those numbers determined? So that's important. Of course, the Broadway Avenue right-way repurpose. We looked at inclusion of multimodal transportation, so pedestrian, bicyclist, and then electric vehicle ride-ride plan. So in terms of the two options that I mentioned, option one is two lanes from front all the way up to Locust, and so that was evaluated. And then option two, we're calling that the hybrid tapered approach. So that, as the name suggests, goes from four lanes at front to three lanes, and then as you go further north, it goes to two lanes from Locust all the way up to Gentry. So here's a very high-level planning exhibit that we put together to really represent what we're discussing here. So I'll talk about, right here, this is the back-end parking. I'll just really quickly navigate. So right, the right is north, and you have front to the left, and then Broadway goes left and right on that screen. So we have back-end parking here. This is close to the East Texas Brewing Company. And so that's back-end parking. And then we have two lanes, like I mentioned, all the way throughout the corridor, and then Elm, Irwin, Ferguson, and Locust, and also Line, that's not shown there, would be always stop-controlled intersections. So that's option one. And then I'll go to option two, this is the hybrid tapered approach. So this one, rather than the back-end parking, we have front-end parking here. So during some of our workshop sessions, we heard from folks that we used to have parallel parking in this area, and we heard that that might be difficult to navigate. So we changed the design to have front-end parking, and you can get in and get out pretty quickly, and it's very familiar to drivers. So that's there. And then you have four lanes in this segment from front to Elm, and then three lanes from Elm to Irwin, and then two lanes from Irwin further up north to Gentry. And then in terms of traffic controls, we would have a traffic signal at Elm, at Locust, and also at Line, and then mini roundabouts, two mini roundabouts at Irwin and Ferguson. Okay, so now I'll talk about future growth modeling. So this is one of the first steps that any traffic engineering study does. So what we looked at was all the known developments in the area. So of course, you know, the proposed courthouse, you have the fair, the Lindsay, Wilcox, Carlton, Onyx. So a lot of different developments that we know of that's going to come into this area. So we wanted to make sure we model all of those known developments. They're expected to be built in 2032 by 2032. So that's nine years' worth of growth that we modeled. And a quick analogy on this is that, one other thing I'll mention is that downtown has negative growth currently. And that's something that we're trying to change through this study, is to bring back investment and reinvestment into the area. And so negative growth rate currently, but we use a conservative 1% growth rate to model the future growth. So we looked at existing volumes, layered on top all of these future development volumes, and then layered on top of that is the 1% growth rate. So it's a realistic but conservative total growth volumes that we looked at. Okay, so now I'll talk a little bit about the one-way to two-way conversion, as well as intersection control options. But before I get there, just really quickly, want to talk about some traffic engineering jargon. So level of service, LOS. What is that? So level of service is a metric that we use to evaluate roadway lengths or intersections for total delay, and we assign a letter grade to it. So in grade school, A was a good grade, and F was a failing grade. So similar in traffic engineering, F is performing poorly, but A really doesn't mean it's performing well, right? In a downtown dense area, that picture there on the top left shows a lot of pavement space and not very many vehicles using the space, right? So what So what we really want to see is a more efficient and effective way of using the available space. So level of service D on the top right there is what we would expect in a downtown environment. So with level of service D, you're able to really efficiently use the roadway space or the vehicles that are traveling and repurpose or rededicate space to pedestrians or landscaping, buffer islands, even benches, right? So you're able to really right-size the vehicle demand and how many lanes do I need versus reallocating that space to other uses, so. Okay, so now I'll talk about the proposed traffic control recommendations, so there's nine signals that are currently on flash, and we've heard from citizens that that's been performing very well, they're on flashing red ball right now, and so that is very similar to the stop-controlled intersection as well, right? So when we did our evaluation of the traffic modeling, we found that it's the volumes aren't high enough to warrant traffic signals at any of the nine intersections that are shown on that graph there to the west of Broadway. So after that, we decided to look at whether they need to be stop-controlled or always stop-controlled or two-way stop-controlled, and so from that, there's a couple of different things that we think about. One is site distance and safety. So along College, you have a lot of intersections that have buildings and very tight right-of-way, there are all the buildings are very close to the right-of-way, so due to that, you know, imagine if I'm in a vehicle and I drive up to the intersection and I look to my left, and you have a building blocking your site distance, obviously you want to have always stop control in that intersection. So along Bodark and College, we have six intersections there that we recommend having always stop control, which is exactly the same as what you have right now, but we would just recommend removing the signals and putting stop signs. And then another consideration is pedestrians, so along College, you have a library, you have the square, you have the parking garage, so lots of pedestrian activity, so that's another reason to look at always stop control, and that's part of our recommendation. And then the second thing that I'll mention is the one-way to two-way street conversion. From our experience in the early 2000s, there was a big push by a lot of municipalities to convert roads to one-way, and the reason was is how do we get as much throughput as possible, right? If I have three lanes all going the same way, I'm able to get as much vehicles through downtown as possible. But now we've realized over time that that really encourages high speed and people just using the street as a raceway almost to go through the downtown environment, and that's not really what we want. So a lot of our clients are coming to us and saying, can we look at a conversion, one-way to two-way conversion, which is exactly what y'all are looking at, and so once we did that, we found that the level of service actually remains the same at C with the one-way or the two-way options, right? So there's really no disadvantage of converting it from one-way to two-way, we hear a lot of people saying it's confusing to operate, so our recommendation is to convert all five of the streets in downtown from one-way to two-way to help improve operations and efficiency. So, all right, now I'll hand it over to Abby.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name is Abby Axelson with Kim Lee Horn, and I'll dive in a little bit more about the actual analysis that we did on Broadway. So for taking away vehicular lanes, what does that look like as far as how that affects the network and as far as rerouting traffic away from Broadway? So in this image, we looked at probe-based data platform called Streetlight, which looks at where the traffic patterns are, where vehicles coming from, where are they going, which ways are they taking, so we looked at a lot of historical data to see where these patterns are, where people are going, mainly for vehicles that are using Broadway Avenue moving north and south. So in the center of that image there, we looked at the northbound and the southbound direction separately because the traffic patterns were a little different, so for the northbound, we, the data showed that about 40% of traffic could be rerouted away from Broadway Avenue. So this doesn't look at vehicles that are going directly to downtown, those vehicles will still remain on Broadway as well as any vehicles that are going, you know, directly through Broadway from front to Gentry and just using it as a bypass, it mainly looks at vehicles that are traveling northeast or northwest and just using Broadway as a cut-through and vice versa for the southbound movement. And so for southbound, the data showed about 26% of traffic that could be rerouted, so a little bit less, and so once those trips are rerouted, on the perimeter of the study area, you can see we have some numbers shown on each corridor, so that on the left of your screen, we're showing Palace Avenue, with that rerouted traffic, it shows about a 20% increase in traffic. So imagine you have 100 vehicles on the road during the peak hour today, it would be changed to 120 vehicles. So you're seeing an increase in traffic from those vehicles moving away from Broadway. So similar on the south side on front, we're seeing about a 7% increase east of Broadway and about a 4% increase on the other side of Broadway, and then along Beckham, an 8% increase as well. On the north side on Gentry, we're actually seeing a decrease in traffic because of that rerouting, since a lot of vehicles are coming from the northeast or northwest or traveling south, those movements are no longer using those inner links of Gentry, so they're using Palace or Beckham to get in and around downtown. Now I'll talk a little bit about the traffic analysis, we'll talk about the capacity of those roadways, so we have X amount of lanes, it can only take X amount of vehicles, so with that rerouted traffic, how do those corridors perform, and then we'll zoom in on the intersections themselves to talk about the delay that you should experience at those intersections with the new traffic patterns. So on the left, we're showing option one here that Haron mentioned earlier, so this is the two-lane option, so one lane northbound, one lane southbound, and this is along Broadway Avenue between front and Locust. So on the southbound direction between Irwin and Elm, where that red box is outlined, we're showing a level of service E, so this is those metrics that Haron mentioned earlier. So level of service E is about 80% capacity, so you only have 20% capacity left just for that southbound lane, and then between Elm and front, you're seeing a level of service F, so over 100% capacity, so bumper-to-bumper traffic, and this is during the critical peak hour, so think, you know, in the AM when the Caldwell School is doing their drop-off, and in the afternoon peak hour when people are coming home from work. And then comparing that to option two, which is the tapered hybrid option, so we start from four lanes and then taper to three lanes and then two lanes as you go north. So again, looking at that southbound movement between Irwin and Elm, now that we have three lanes, we're seeing that operated a level of service D, which is about 65% capacity, and then as you travel further south, level of service C between Elm and front, which is about 45% vehicular capacity. So we're seeing better operations with the option two as you have more vehicular capacity, and so as we move forward through the presentation, I'll talk through the results for option two, as that is ultimately our recommendation. So these little bubbles are really small on the screen, but each intersection, on the left here, we're showing the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour, and how those study intersections operate with this pattern, and this is for the peak 15 minutes of the day. So again, when the Caldwell School is doing their pickup-drop off, and then in the afternoon when you're coming home from work, so it's just that the worst 15 minutes of the day. One thing I want to mention on this slide, the top bubble for each intersection is showing the existing condition, so if you go out there today, this is the delay that you would expect to experience. The middle bubble is what we call the do-nothing scenario, so we're looking at 2032 traffic volumes if the development comes, if the organic growth comes, and no updates are made to downtown, no road diet on Broadway Avenue, this is what you should expect to experience at the intersection. And then that bottom bubble is the results for the 2032 hybrid tapered option two. So if those new traffic patterns take place, you take away capacity on Broadway Avenue, this is the delay that you would expect to experience at that intersection. So if you look at most of the bubbles, the middle bubble and the bottom bubble are mostly the same, if not just a little different, and so the road diet on Broadway Avenue would not cause a significant change to operations at these intersections if, you know, if we were to do, compared to if nothing were to be done downtown. So it's somewhat of a trade-off of, you know, you get all of these improvements and revitalization to downtown, and you don't see a lot of traffic delay peritively at those intersections. I'll also mention that in our model, we didn't take into consideration any signal timing changes, which is something that the city will definitely take a look at as these new traffic patterns start to take place, especially at Broadway in front, a lot of those traffic patterns will change with people routing away from Broadway Avenue, so this is somewhat the worst-case scenario, that signal timing will increase efficiency through those intersections. And now diving into the recommendations for option two that Haron mentioned earlier. So I'll talk a little bit about the benefits of repurposing those vehicular lanes and making them into more of a, you know, walkable repurposed space, so it's a way to use a vehicular-dominated environment to revitalize the available space for extra things like parking and landscape as well as shared-use paths, bike lanes, designated loading and unloading zones to create a sense of place and environment for pedestrians and all sense of all modes of transportation to be able to operate together. So this is a snip similar to what Haron showed earlier, this is between front and Elm, so you have, north is to your right along Broadway, so East Texas Brewing and that retail area is at the top of your screen, and we have a proposed mid-block pedestrian crossing here, just in front of that retail area, so those pedestrians will cross four lanes of traffic, and this is a picture of an example of one that's on the east side of UT Tyler out there today. So pedestrians can come up to the signal, push the button, the flashing red lights will come on, and they'll be able to safely cross, vehicles will stop. This signal can also be coordinated with the upstream and downstream signals, so signal at front and signal at Elm, so that if there are a lot of pedestrians, they'll be able to talk to the nearby signals to flush out vehicles so that the pedestrian call isn't just, you know, going on repeat. And then as far as parking between front and Elm, so as Haron mentioned earlier, we're showing this angled parking in front of the retail area, and then parallel parking as you travel further north, and I'll also mention that this is by no means a design, it's a very conceptual layout, but these are just options to show you what could be, what could be out there as far as what's inside the existing right-of-way limits. And then the existing parking numbers between front and Elm, there's 28 existing on-street parking spaces today, and with the layout that we're showing now, we're showing an additional one parking space, so 29 parking spaces between front and Elm. And then moving further north to Irwin and Ferguson, this is where we are showing the mini roundabouts. So these roundabouts are right next to the existing Tyler City Square with the relocation of the city, or with the Smith County courthouse on the south, you'll have Park on both the north and the south where that main square will be. So these mini roundabouts will really create a sense of place of when vehicles are traveling through Broadway, they know they're in downtown, it's a little different feel, and then we also have pedestrian crossings around the roundabouts as well as in the middle between them. And a little bit more about mini roundabouts, so as you may see, they're mini, they're not your typical roundabout, the center circle is actually traversable, so any heavy vehicles that are coming to downtown to make, to unload, and also any emergency vehicles will be able to traverse that center island without any damage to the vehicle or the curb itself, it's about an eight-to-10 inch rise in that circle, and mini roundabouts also just slow down traffic. So when you're moving through these roundabouts, vehicles are traveling about 10 to 15 miles an hour, so that it's also like a speed coming measure to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment. A few other benefits are reduced maintenance, so these intersections today are signalized, and if the road diet on Broadway Avenue happens, the signals will need to be replaced, new equipment, so that equipment would no longer need to be maintained, and then roundabouts also allow for steady flow of traffic. So if you think about the platoon that's coming through and you have a few vehicles trickling in, those vehicles will typically get a red light and have to wait at the light, and now they would be able to go through the roundabout with less delay. It also shows a reduction in automobile crashes, so if you're looking at an intersection, it has a higher rate for head-on crashes where at a roundabout, you're going around the circle, those head-on crashes aren't as common. And then as far as pedestrians, the pedestrian crossing time is reduced, so these are one-lane roundabouts that we're proposing, so pedestrians will only have to cross about 20, 24 feet to get across that pedestrian crossing, and each approach will be controlled by a yield sign, so vehicles will see the yield sign, and they'll be able to see those pedestrians as they're gonna cross. Our team also put together several 3D renderings of these improvements, and again, I'll mention that this is by no means a design, design has been at its stage in this project, but these are more so to give an idea of what these improvements could look like and to answer any questions. So this is a rendering of Broadway looking north from front, so you have the East Texas Brewing and the retail area on your left, we're showing that angled parking and then as well as that pedestrian mid-block crossing. And then further north, this is Irwin and Ferguson looking south, so you have those mini roundabouts as well as the square on both sides of those mini roundabouts. And then this is further north at Locust where we're showing that proposed traffic signal, so you have the one lane in each direction with the center turn lane. And that concludes our presentation, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today, I'll open it up for any questions.
All right. Say one more, just update for, for the process, this again is a project going through the NPO, and we're trying to get all of the input that we can at this point, it is scheduled to be reviewed and finally adopted by the NPO's policy committee at the end of May, but before that happens, we wanted to bring this item to the city council, and that's why we have the recommendation to try to get a resolution of support for the study, for the results of the study, and if there is a preference for one option versus the other, we'd like to get that input from the city councils, that is the request for the resolution that we're requesting from the city council today.
Well, I'll start off the discussion. First of all, I like option two, and primarily because when you think of having an F rating from Elm to front right off the bat, where you got bumper-to-bumper, it's just, that's not, I think, a very smart way to start out. So I like, I like option two, this is my at least third time to see this presentation, and the first time I had a little anxiety, and, and, but I also noticed that some of the parking has changed a little bit, and this third time, my anxiety level has gone down considerably to where I'm really starting to get it, and, you know, I know when we met yesterday with some other folks, there was some concern about the roundabouts and safe pedestrian crosswalks and all that, and I'm assuming some of these crosswalks are raised and so cars will slow down, but what I also realize is this is, this whole thing is a, is a concept, and that we're not voting today to say option one or option two, or we're not voting to have a roundabout versus a stop sign or a red light, it's just a, it's a, it's a resolution of support to move forward. And, and downtown is just, everybody, we all know it, that where it's headed and where it's come, and I like where it's going, and we gotta, we gotta do something. And change is difficult, and people are gonna struggle with change, no matter if we do one, two, or nothing, people are gonna struggle with it a little bit, so that's just my So that's just my beginning points and I'll open it up.
I'll start. I thought the presentations were good, so I appreciate you doing that. What I'd like to say is for the folks that watch this and see it in the newspaper tomorrow on the news for the first time, because we've seen it twice or three times, is that this is a change. This is a big change to what we have today. And, and when you see the, I mean, I can imagine people saying, you're gonna squeeze Broadway down, you know, we're trying to address traffic, that's making it worse, is that, is that downtown becomes a destination, it's not a pass-through with this plan. This is, this is a different concept, we're trying to achieve a different goal than what we have today. And you, you have to start with that in mind for any of this to make sense. But yeah, I, I, I think that obviously Plan Two, I think, is the direction we want to go. I think the concepts look good. You know, I'd wanna be clear, I think you did a good job addressing the roundabouts, but to be clear about, you know, how do the pedestrians get through there? If the, I guess it depends on how many cars are coming through the roundabouts and all that, but I don't think we have any roundabouts in Tyler, so that's gonna be interesting. But, but I think it's a, I think it's a good plan.
Yeah, it's a, I enjoyed the presentation as well and that, just like these guys, I've said in probably a couple of the presentations. And again, like the mayor said, it's change and no, you know, my pastor said one time, nobody likes change but a wet baby. And so, and so we're gonna, so it's gonna, and it's, and it's, because even going through, you know, you know, our everyday lives, you know, change is, is difficult. And some people who have lived in Tyler all their life, they've always seen Broadway this way and, you know, this, this whole square set up this way. So it's gonna be, you know, I think we're gonna have some, some more anxiety, just gonna tell you, it's gonna happen. But I, we're gonna get through this and I've spent some, some time downtown in the evenings and it just blows my mind how many people are downtown in the evenings. And so I think, you know, once this project gets, you know, gets started, I think it's gonna be a win for everybody.
Well, I wanna piggyback onto what Councilman McGee says, that the only people that like wet is the baby. And so I must be that wet baby because I love change. And, and I understand that change is ongoing. And so I felt like, looking at this, I felt like I was in Europe someplace seeing the roundabouts. So I'm excited about roundabouts becoming, thank you for your presentation.
The one area I struggle and it's kind of piggybacking on what everybody says, we're used to the same thing. And I, I just struggle with how do we redirect traffic that has used Broadway as a cut-through forever and ever? And now we're gonna try to push them over to Palace and Beckham. It's retraining those drivers, whether they're new to Tyler or they're been in Tyler forever. But I go down Broadway and that's how I'm getting from point A to point B and to get to C past Broadway. But now I'm gonna go around out of my comfort zone. So training those people to get them off Broadway, that's where I kind of struggle.
Look at this and without sounding hickey, this is big-city vision.
There you go.
Let me tell you, I'm, I'm really excited about it. You know, COVID made us think about everything differently. And so the opportunity to have expanded sidewalks and green spaces and so on just simply causes people to start thinking about sidewalk cafes and walk spaces and everything else, which enhances that downtown destination experience. And so I, I like option two. I think that it's an effective way to move people through the downtown area, but it also creates that environment that is gonna make our downtown unique, especially with all the development that's going on downtown. Go for it.
Save the best for last?
Yep.
Like y'all, I've seen this a couple of times and I would say option two is my preference as well because I've been vocal about no back-end parking. I know I've made that clear to a lot of y'all and staff as well. And I would say some of my comments are more technical. You know, being in favor of this, I'm a huge proponent of roundabouts. I've even talked to Cameron about putting roundabouts in some areas in, in my district for speed control, so I'm a big proponent of that. Some of the technical questions that I have are, you know, do we remove the flashing red lights? What are the costs associated with that? Is it more effective to remove those and put up stop signs or keep those and keep them red flashing? And I don't wanna get too much into the weeds today, but questions like that. And then on the nine controlled intersections that are four-way stops, you know, two of them in the plans were changed, excuse me, to two-way stops. And so I'd wanna look at those to see is it more beneficial to keep those two ways or, I mean, change them to two ways or keep them four ways? Because it could get confusing if we have seven four-ways and then we're doing two two-ways. And so those are some of the questions that I'd wanna look at.
Or Councilman Haney, in the military, they taught us the back-end just in case we need to make a quick getaway.
I hope we don't have to do that downtown.
One thing I'll mention about those, those nine traffic signals, since if those were to be converted to two-way streets, not all of them, right now they're set up for one-way approaches. So if you were to wanna keep those with the red flash and you convert it to two-way, you'd have to put up new traffic signal poles to accommodate those approaches. So that's something to take into consideration as well.
Yeah, and I think mine were more directed towards like the Bonner area, right out here. I think on the plan, it had it as a two-way stop. And with the new residential developments coming in, I would wanna make sure that if we do change those to a two-way stop, you know, what does the pedestrian flow look like with the, with the residential units coming in compared with the, with the traffic
I think those are great points. And I, I think we're gonna have plenty of time to get in the weeds on this.
Right.
So any other comments or questions for Haran or Abby?
Thank you.
Great presentation. All right. What's the will of the council?
This is an action item.
I think so.
We've got to, actually, a motion to adopt a resolution of support.
Move second.
Well, got a motion by McGee, second by Curtis and McKeller, whichever you prefer for them. Any further discussion? Halsey, a favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It's exciting. Thank you all very much. Paul?
Is Paul gonna be as exciting?
Probably not.
I do have a good idea for a fundraising though. And when it involves auctioning the use of Cameron and his test equipment, it'll always be light for a week. You might, you might put that on the agenda one of these days. No, I really had to talk to you this morning about some Keaton Avenue drainage improvements. This is a HEPSense sales tax project that has been on the, or has been on the radar at least since 2016. The West Mud Creek Tributary collects water from about 200, almost 250 acres before it meets West Mud Creek or a large tributary, I guess I should say, West Mud Creek. But the problem is that Keaton is overtop during heavy rain events. The flow with the culverts under the street are not large enough. It backs the water up. We've had some homes and some property that's been flooded. We've had some sinkholes and some erosion issues that result from this. I threw in a little map here. The 250 acres is that large red area there. The area, the smaller dark red area is actually the, the water that drains through the trib that we're focused on here that crosses under Keaton and then down at Shepherd. And then the area that is in blue there is specifically our area that we're targeting and proposing these improvements in. So half, I'm sorry. Langen did a study with Cardinal back in 2019. Of course, they were Adams at that time, but they looked at five different options and combinations there, and they're listed out here. The Keaton overflow relief, they did for the sake of argument, look at upstream detention, but that was deemed totally unfeasible due to the development upstream and remove homes and build detention. There's a concrete channel remediation and extension of the natural channel from Keaton to Shepherd, and then there's channel widening between Shepherd and Windwood. The, the Avenue, Keaton Avenue crossing, expanding that and getting more across is not feasible due to the elevation of roadway, due to utilities that are there and just the cost of, of involved in doing that. And really, quite honestly, the engineering, excuse me, impossibility of making that work effectively. So the, the combination that we're proposing to have them pursue and move forward on the design of involves the overflow relief, the channel widening, and culvert expansion from Shepherd to Windwood, and then look at the Keaton Avenue to Shepherd erosion remediation of that channel. And, and the estimated cost for this engineering work that'll get us all the way through our, through construction is $355,030. There's an optional $12,500 in there that may or may not be needed again due to waters in the US and some environmental questions that involve that natural channel. And I already mentioned that it's gonna get us through construction, but that's overview of the scope. They're gonna, they're going to fine-tune their study, answer a few more detailed questions, design bid, and, and supervise the construction. Estimated construction cost is $3.75 million there, and about 3.3 of that is the channel, the bypass from Keaton, down Keaton and into Shepherd, and then the improvement of that, of that channel that's carrying all this flow from Shepherd down to Windwood. The natural channel is $474,000, that improvement step is currently behind the homes there on Keaton. And I've got these areas circled there, the long oval red area is that natural channel that I'm talking about. And I'm pointing that out because we do not have easements there, but when this study was instigated, there were a lot of complaints of erosion issues and problems back there, so that was included in looking at this. We do have an easement down there in the bottom already, drainage easement, and then that small area, that small blue oval there from Shepherd down to the start of that channel is an area that we currently do not have an easement in that we will have to look at pursuing that. So I just wanted to point that out and then we've got some, some easements and some areas without easements. Any questions before I give my open admission?
Any questions for Paul?
Yep. So Paul, on the, is the, remembering the original study, it was rerouting the water down below.
That is correct.
Is that still?
That is still the program, I'm sorry. That is the bypass option. It would be taking the flow from the upstream side, the east side of the channel there, Keaton, and then running it underneath Keaton and then dumping it back into the channel there.
Okay. And, and so are, but are they also gonna be looking at the natural drainage that you mentioned there, the, in between the homes or not?
We are looking at it, but it's really more of an erosion repair issue because again, getting the water underneath just due to the elevation, we couldn't get that road high enough, wide enough, you know, to, to get that water over there fast enough. I would like for something magically to happen because that would be great, but it doesn't happen like that's a possibility.
Well, there's really two pieces to this, even though there's only one that we're gonna consider today. The first piece is we have to fix this problem. There's no doubt about that. But the second piece that's not on the agenda, legal counsel, you can tell me if I'm wrong here, but when are we gonna see changes in the code so that 10, 15 years down the road, we're not looking at another four, five million dollar project? Because we have the drainage study in place and I'm not for sure if we've made any changes in the code or there's been any recommendations to make changes in the code to increase the engineering, the type of construction and so on that would eliminate the need for expensive projects like this. So.
There are proposed changes that I've made and I've got some language as such and we have had internal meetings about that. So we've got a longer list of, of things that, in my opinion and Darren's opinion, that need to happen. And that's currently where it's sitting right now. You'll have to, you can ask Darren who's up there for the next one, kind of where that's sitting. Or you can come up.
Basically where we are right now is I'm, we've taken it initially to Developers Roundtable and now we're gonna, we've set up a committee and we're about to start wanting to get that schedule, that committee's schedule for the Developers Roundtable to review the proposed changes that we would like to see and then go from there and get their input.
And I think.
Well, I think it's, I think it's, with what you're saying, it's just like the, the traffic study that Haran and Abby are talking about. You know, they want, they want Broadway to be a C because they're looking 10 years out. It's just like these, these, these drainage, I mean, you, you wanna size it to where it's a C, so, so you're covered 10 years, 20 years out, you don't have to redo it.
Sure. And, and I'll just remind council, you know, last council meeting, we approved the drainage project off Shiller Road and Holly Tree, and that's $3.6 million plus engineering. We've got another $4.1 million with this project. And so, I mean, the list is just gonna, well, we got a long list of projects, but.
Yeah, we don't wanna keep digging the hole.
Exactly.
Yeah, they get worse.
Hey, Paul, I cannot talk today, I'm sorry. What does it look like in the process, yes, thanks, Paul? Notifying the neighbors and at what stage in that and what all does that entail since there's a lot of language right there?
There were some meetings held whenever the study was done back in 19 and that was before my time, but I have met with a few of the residents that back up, or that front Keaton, that back up to that natural channel. And, and we have talked about what we're proposing to do. And of course, they're very interested in having us hop off into that channel and do some, do those erosion repairs. But again, since we don't have an easement, we're gonna have to look at, you know, how we, how we do that and how we address that and, and the cost of doing that. Because, because as a rule, if we don't have an easement on something like that, we stay away from it because we don't have the, the responsibility to maintain it and keep it up. But we can get into the both sides of that argument that I don't know that, and that's part of our UDC conversation, I think, that will need to be had.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what you're saying, Bob, is for those that don't realize, you have a creek running down between these homes, the city doesn't have a right-of-way. Some of the homeowners have gone in and improved that channel, have, you know, have structure there to control the water when it, because there's a lot of water that moves through there. Some people haven't done anything. So right at the beginning and the end of, of the structure you put in, it gets undermined by your neighbor and it's just, you know, mayhem. So, yeah, we don't, we wanna fix this, but make sure we don't create any others like I moved to, to M1.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? Halsey, a favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Paul. Morning, Darren.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
When I get up here, I'll briefly talk about this, I know this council meeting is going a little longer. So I wanna briefly, you've already heard about this, the numerous drainage improvements for 2023. It was called a little something different back when, it was approved for the engineering and engineering's taken a little while. And we've also added a site to it. We've also had to get some construction easements just so we can get in there and do it. But, so I wanna briefly remind you what the project really is and then I wanna go into the bids we got. Basically what we have, or you can see the, up on the screen, we have five locations here. They're basically generally in the southern part of town and the southeastern part of town. And you can read right here, but I wanna go ahead and go to the next slide and I wanna show you exactly what they are. Now, at 400 West Grande, this is just north of Grande, right by those apartments. And some of you have probably seen it, recognized it, thinking, wow, that's, that looks crazy. Now, we haven't, we, this one thing has held us up a little bit getting an easement from them. They weren't, they weren't resistant to it, they were just had a process they needed to go through. And holidays and other things like that didn't help. So, but this, as you can see, this wall is failing quite well and we're just, this is more of a maintenance issue that just happens over time. That's, that's really what this is. Next one would be the Coverland Village, which has erosion downstream with a 54-inch discharge pipe. And you can see that the head wall is, can't deliver it out under, in there. It's just, it happens. So the West Grande, let's give you the Golden Road there, we have the failing head wall and erosion right through there. It's a little harder seeing this picture, but it gives you an idea of what we're looking at. We also have the Divine in Pinkerton where we have a separation of existing storm sewer pipe. And the, in the eastern end of the street, so we have erosion in there also. And then at Lazy Creek near University Boulevard, we have erosion at the head wall, again with the head wall being cantilevered out into the creek. So these are, these are also some that we are wanting to do these for improvements to, to show that we are maintaining some of these so we can get some grants in the future for things. So some of, one of these locations is, will help with that. So we did open bids on Tuesday, March 28th of this year. We did get two bids. And you are, you can see there is quite a discrepancy between the two, between Reynolds and Kay and True Roads Construction. True Roads is a relatively new contractor. The, the crews and everybody are very seasoned. They came from other contractors, just like you, you're seeing recently that several companies, you're having like a crew break off and form their own company from other contractors that are long, they, they worked for them for many, many years. So that, so because of the difference, you know, the $350,000 difference in the bids, we did check every reference. We did get a recommendation. We checked into everything about the, about the True Roads that we could. We even called them and said, hey, are you comfortable with your bid? And verify that. I mean, they could have made a mistake. They could have done anything, overlooked something. They assured us they are there. They are comfortable with their bid. They feel they can do it no problem, without any issues. And we even got a recommendation letter from Langen, the design engineer, who went into even more detail checking, checking on it. So we do feel comfortable, all that to say, using True Roads. So at this time, Engineering Department does recommend City Council to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with True Roads Construction for the construction of the numerous drainage improvement projects for 2023 for a cost not to exceed $747,958.
All right. Any questions for Darren?
Well, I do want to make a comment. This is kind of a carryover from the last agenda item. The Golden Road repair that, that you showed needs to be made. There's, I've got a developer that's developing a neighborhood very close to that. And this is making the case for stricter code, or not code enforcement, but stricter building code to require development of those watershed areas. Because it's improved one side of the creek, but then the backside of the creek is not improved. I've got trees leaning. I've got fences being held up with boards crossing the creek. I mean, it's, it's a kind of a mess. So that's also the sense of urgency because we'll probably be looking at a project there to work on the upper end of that creek also too. So that's really what I wanted to say, since it's urgency for revising the code.
Do you have one more meeting?
One more.
I'm all for you getting, getting it all off your, you know, bringing up all these items.
He's got to finish strong.
There's no mission here, Mr. Mayor, except for making sure that you guys are looking forward also too after I'm gone to follow up, make sure we're making those changes.
Yeah, I'd like to say while we're talking about this, is it, yeah, we, we have lean city staff and it's going to stay that way for a long time. But I would like for us to consider on these types of issues, you know, you could pay a person to go inspect these types of assets that the city has drainage systems around the city and catch these things early, and I'm not, I'm not pointing this at you. I'm just making the statement. Catch these projects earlier that where it may be a $30,000 to $50,000 project instead of a $200,000 project. Pay for that person easily in one of these projects. Because once they get bad, it becomes an emergency, as you well know. So.
Jeff Kurt and his crews do, we do know about a lot of these issues y'all are bringing up. They do, they do as much as they can with the manpower they have.
To, to find them or to.
To find them and fix them.
And to do repairs. Now, sometimes, as with anything, it's, you can, and they, you know, there's, there gets to be a cost for, to take it back to the ones, the pictures, especially the one where you have it sloping off of the retained, one on like 400 West Grande. So a certain amount of, that's just going to happen with concrete drainage structures eventually that you have to have some of a repair beyond just essentially, you know, minor repairs that's going to have to happen. And so some of those are just going to, some of that's just, you have to replace and it costs.
I would think the one on Cumberland Village is just from the sheer runoff. The, the amount of hard surface that keeps getting added and added and added there is just producing that runoff that.
That is correct. And then it just gets a certain pattern and it just washes out. That is correct. But once it starts, it goes pretty quick.
Darren, you said we could possibly get grants?
In the future, what we do, like for the text dot bridges and stuff like that, and then the text dot roads and even some of those others, we have to show maintenance. We have to show that we've tried and made an effort to maintain. And that's what some of these projects, you know, like University and Lazy Creek. That's one of those that we have to show maintenance before they'll ever give us a grant. If they will not give us a grant, they don't, they think we just totally get elected.
We're sticking with this price?
Yes.
Even if they come back later and said it's going to require more money, we're sticking with this price?
Unless we find something that was not originally there.
Darren, that's going to be my question. And I'll preface it by saying, I understand, once you get into a project, things change. And, and, you know, something may have to be added, so costs change. But did y'all get that assurance from them in writing?
We just got the bid price from them. Now, we do have some contingency built into the contract for this reason.
But you said you went back to them and double checked on the price and verified.
Their prices.
Right. And so did y'all get that in writing? Any assurance from them?
Not in writing.
But it's bonded.
Yeah, it's part of the contract.
It's correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Darren?
So moved.
Okay. Got a motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. M3. Kate.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
I am here for the construction project award for our 2023 water main improvements program. We had, this right here is a list of streets that are, 10 streets that are within this program. If you can see on the aerial, there are some yellow highlighted areas, most of which are on the eastern side of the city, all within the loop, Loop 323. What happens with this project with our, with our water main improvements, we get a list of streets from engineering. And so they, they tell us, we delayed the overlay on these streets because you have two-inch water mains underneath it. We've been coordinating with them on that. And so we take that list of streets that we've delayed. We cross-referenced it with our list of frequent line breaks on those two-inch water lines. And just to give you a frame of reference, we have about 10 miles of two-inch water lines within our system that we are working to replace on an annual basis. So we, we looked at, and after we cross-referenced, these were the streets that got, that were selected with the amount of funds that we had available to us. So with this project, we'll be replacing 6,500 linear feet of the two-inch galvanized water lines. This will help with water quality in the area. It will also enable us to loop some of these lines so we don't have to wash as much. So we had the open bids on April 11th. Three bids were received. Pats Capco was the low bidder. They are currently on our contractors list. So I am here to request that the city council consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Pats Capco Construction for the 2023 Water Main Improvement Project, bid number 23035 in the amount of $1,177,945. And to adopt the resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Kate?
Move to approve in three.
Okay.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're down to the consent agenda. Anything needs to be pulled or voted as this?
Move to approve. Consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? Okay, I want everybody to be really enthusiastic, especially since you only have one more meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right.
Mr. Mayor, you sound awful enthusiastic.
We're sad to see you go.
Yeah. I didn't mean it to come across that. City managers report.
All right. I'm not bringing the enthusiasm that the mayor has. My apologies in advance. Sales tax figures available from the Texas Comptroller's website. Indicator of sales tax revenue that was deposited last week was $4.63 million. This compares to revenues of $4.11 million for the same period last year. The actual increase for the month compared with the same month last year was 12.71%. And this compares to the state monthly average of 11, as 11.52% in sales tax revenue collections for cities. So the city of Tyler still, this economy is still doing quite well, especially even compared to the state average as well. You know, Cameron gave a great presentation earlier about as far as the traffic signal work. And one of the things I want to brag about, just that he and the department that he showed off were doing is they began, begun their annual comprehensive preventive maintenance inspections of all 149 intersections in the city. So this process includes inspecting all traffic and best screen signals, testing the signal or conflict monitor, performing any LED replacements, completing aerial signals and detection inspections and much more. The process is designed to ensure the longevity and functionality of the city's signal assets. During the inspections, the intersection will be placed in red flash for about 15 minutes. We anticipate this process to be completed in mid-June. And this is such an important step, you know, the, the things that he brings to use at his council and the actions y'all take on the capital and the, as far as kind of the policies and the movement is essential. But then kind of the ongoing maintenance and inspections of those so that we continue with the investment that you're making, continue to make that last. We're very proud of Cameron and the staff for keeping that going.
So basically he's playing red light, gray light?
Red light, flash and red light, yellow light, then green light. So it's a weirder game. So a couple of other things that we were just very excited about. On Saturday, April 15th, Parks Department held the grand opening for the Nobly Young Park. We had about 75 members of the community, including the local bike club members and St. Louis community residents come out to enjoy the sunshine, the new children's bike park, the new workout stations, the new pavilions and the new trail. We thanks, to have, the thanks to the city council and Parks Board members who were in attendance. And a special thanks to Councilmember Robert McGee, who served speaking during that ceremony. Keep Todd Beautiful added a small mural at the Nobly Young Children's Bike Park. And the mural features elements of tying in the restroom mural that was completed at the end of 2022 by artist Jamie Robinson. So that was a great event. And we appreciate those who were able to make it out. And the community just, I mean, just fell in love with it. And just how incredible that is. And then finally, just a huge thank you to everyone involved for the successful grand opening of the WT Berkshire Convention Center. On Thursday, April 14th at night, we had just really kind of a momentous grand opening for that facility. There was as far as just incredible compliments to the city. As people got in there and got to see what that looked like, how that functioned. And then of course fireworks at the end of the night just was an incredible thing to top it off. And so it was one of those events that the community will remember for a long time. And so thank y'all and the council for your involvement in that and your support with this project.
Thank you, Ed. Any other comments for Ed before we adjourn?
I do. I simply want to make a comment and a, or share a comment that was made to me by several restaurateurs that catered, or had catered in the old Harvey, that were very vocal about the lack of kitchen equipment in the new WT Berkshire Conference Center. After they toured the facility, they were absolutely overwhelmed and they, in a positive way. And they said that it absolutely is built for the future. So I had to share that.
That's good.
I'll cancel on so too. So.
That's good.
Well, and I have to add one thing. The, there was a function there this weekend. And I went up there Saturday afternoon because I was all freaked out that something wasn't going to be right. Because it was, it was really first, the first big event. And, and I had this fear that the toilets were going to stop up and that the circuit breakers were all going to go off when the band started playing. And so I actually kept texting Danny Shepherd throughout the night to make sure everything was going okay. And the night went well. And so it, it was really nice to see an event, the very first event be successful. And, and just like Ed said, it's, it's, it's the whole staff. It's the whole council. It's just been a, a great experience and it's fun to see it open and the fountain is beautiful and so good to be a part of it. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I agree.
All right. We adjourn.